Mine's the same way.
I'll just copy off.
That makes sense.
I'm gonna schedule some training.
Welcome, everyone, to the Town of Hennessy. We're gonna start with the Utility Authority since we've got such a large crowd and I think that's what majority of people are here for. The Hennessy Utility Authority Board of Trustees Regular Meeting Tuesday, October 14th, Hennessy Town Hall, 6 o'clock. Call to order, roll call, please. Sorry, that's my fault. I threw your curve ball. I gotta keep you on your toes.
Randy?
Here.
Bert?
Here.
Harold?
Here.
John?
Here.
David?
Here.
Okay, consent agenda. 2.1, minutes of the previous month's meeting. 2.2, approval of claims as follows. Hennessy Utility Authority Fund, $203,172.21. Previous month, Hennessy Utility Authority Fund, $1,645.87. Approve the employee dental, vision, life insurance renewal effective January 1st, 2026. Approve computer information concepts, annual people wear agreement for financial accounting software for fiscal year 2026. Renew property and liability insurance with Oklahoma Municipal Assurance Group. I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Randy?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Okay, I'm gonna skip down to 4.4, which is discussion with possible action on application from Centennial Solids Control LLC to place a commercial waste management facility, including commercial pits located at 169001 East 670 Road, Hennessy. So I was approached by some citizens on this and they have some concerns and so I wanted to bring it up in the meeting and talk to Jared and see what the town stance is on that.
Well, I think really the question you all need to kind of answer yourselves tonight is whether you want to go and really will be hire someone other than me just because the Corporation Commission is a unique animal in the way the law works. To essentially protest this, I'm equating it to oil and gas Corporation Commission work since I'm more familiar with it, but somebody has applied to put a commercial waste facility out northeast of town, I believe. And the question, since we're within, I believe it's a three-mile radius that we're required to be notified of that happening, now we have the opportunity to protest it, let landowners around it protest it. Since it's outside of town limits, I don't know that we've got a lot of say in it, but we've got the opportunity to say something if you all choose to. So that's really ultimately the question of do you want me to start trying to find somebody to protest that or not? Then obviously later on, we would end up needing to bring back probably a representation agreements and things like that for you all, but times of the essence to be able to get that addressed and moving forward. So that is really the question we have posed.
Okay.
Did that fall under O-MAG?
No, this would not. It would be something we have to do on our own because it's not something where we're suing or being sued. So we would need to hire somebody on our own to do it. I would guess, although I don't know, there are probably plenty of landowners around that will be doing something so maybe people can join forces and it can make it a little bit less expensive on everybody. But I don't know that that's the case.
Now, is it state law that says that it has to be three miles?
Yeah, the notification radius is state law. So we really have no say again in whether it gets approved. We're not issuing any kind of a permit or a go-ahead on it at all. It's just we're within that radius so we have the right to protest.
Actually, we couldn't do anything anyway because it's state law states is three miles. So we can't approve or accept anything under three miles, right?
Well, again, we can't, since it's outside of town limits, we can't, we can't on our own approve it or deny it at all. We just, because we're within that radius and we're required to get notice, we now have the chance to essentially object to it. Or I guess on the protest side, you can say you want to approve it and say you agree with it. Again, we're not approving it, but it would be whether we want to hire someone to represent the town's interest there or if you leave that to the landowners that are around.
So my understanding was state law states that it has to be at least three miles away from a population and that they're asking for a waiver on that law. So they're asking for the OCC basically to, basically to give them a waiver to allow them to do it anyway even though they're within that three mile.
I follow you now. Sure, and that's where the protest comes in. We don't want it here, but again, let's think back to oil and gas stuff. I don't want to get anybody's hopes up to just say, oh, we say we want to protest to it, it's gonna win. I mean, think back to the oil and gas side of things. If somebody wants a location exception or a multi-horizontals unit, nine times out of 10, it doesn't matter how many people protest, so long as the money gets worked out on the back end for the power players, it's gonna go through.
How much is that on the side of oil and gas versus DEQ and all that?
None of this is DEQ. This is just another subset of the Corporation Commission work. So it's not, wouldn't be to the oil and gas division. They've got a separate division that deals with stuff like this.
I contacted OCC today and they act like, you know, that wasn't in their department.
What, like the field office here?
Yeah.
Because most of that's oil and gas related, so they wouldn't have anything to do with it anyway. It would have to be like calling them because OG&E wanted to do a rate hike. Doesn't impact the oil and gas division at all. It's another part of OCC.
Do they also want to put animal waste in there?
That I'm not aware of. I don't have all of the details on it. It's just we've got this broad brush that hey, we want to do this, we're gonna have hearing on it.
Yeah. I studied a little bit, you know, I know if there was a landowner around here, I probably wouldn't want, you know, so, you know, the landowner that was selling the land, you know. Yeah, and I really don't want to be inside the city limits smelling crap all day long either. So that's where I stand at.
Jared, a point of clarification, if you could, please. The three-mile radius, does the law state that they cannot put this within three miles of the Hennessy Town Limits and they're asking for a variance to that? Or does a three-mile radius just who they have to notify?
And I've read it both ways. That they've got to get the waiver, let me pull it back up here again. From what I remember, my take on it is a little different than where Randy was. What was that they got to get approval to put it in. So it's not necessarily the waiver, it's the notice within that three-mile radius and we just happen to be within the three-mile radius.
So there's no current state law that says that it cannot be within a three-mile radius?
Not that I'm aware of, but I could have missed it. Because again, my focus on it right now is at least just the question of do we want to find someone to protest it on our behalf? The application in front of them, and again, the application right now is I'm seeing it is just we want to put this facility in, can we?
The way I read it in the proposal, a city with populations of less than 20,000 people, they can't put it within three miles.
Unless there's a waiver. So that probably, because again, this is the way I read it and maybe let's say it's a both of those, because I've been reading it, this is their initial application, it's not a separate waiver. So it's probably a two-step process and we've got to get it approved and get through this waiver process to do all of it since we're in that three-mile radius. If that makes sense?
So is this?
So it's kind of a mix of the two. They're asking for permission to do it on the global scale, but they have another hurdle to jump over because of the radius.
Now, the three miles, that fly miles or is it like, you know, actually drive miles or how does that actually go?
Generally on all of that, I can't speak to this one for sure, but generally all of that is it takes us as a three-mile radius straight as a crow flies from the exterior boundary. So it's not from one spot, it would be the whole exterior boundary. So, you know, it's gonna be more than a three-mile wide circle. It's gonna be, you know, if it's a quarter section, it's gonna be, you know, six miles plus.
Jared? Under four, under relief sought, H, letter H. It does talk about being, there states the commercial pit facility will not be constructed within three miles of the city limits of the municipality.
So both parts, as I was saying before, they're applying to be able to put in the facility, but then also for that waiver or the variance. So both, we can get to that.
Randy, can I ask a question?
Sure.
Can you say commercial waste facility? What does that entail?
It's a very broad thing that they're asking for. Majority of the time, it's around here, it's oilfield waste, but it could be a number of things. We don't know what that is, right? So, yeah, that's the broad stroke that we don't like because basically if they got a contract from anything, I'm not sure what's allowed and what's not allowed and that's not listed in this, so.
May I speak?
Yes.
Answer to some of the questions about the three-mile radius. It is a three-mile radius, it is the law. They're asking for a waiver. It's not up to any opinions, that is the law, to review the oil and gas rules. It is, as the pro flies, it's a radius. Well, not a radius, but it is, as the pro flies, three miles. The things that they're asking about, a little bit interesting to you, to be able to dispose of is not just water-based drilling foot, but oil-based drilling foot, oil mud, contaminated soils from oil or salt, high chloride disposals, caustic materials, amine, glycol, even trash, oil trash filters, molecular sids, this can all go in there. Pretty much it opens it up to a lot of things. They're even asking for, in this, the application is asking for a waiver to the limits of the chlorides. Right now, what is typical, what is written in the oil and gas or the Corporation Commission rules is the chlorides, no more than 5,000 milligrams per liter. They're asking for an unlimited fluoride level in there, which would mean that there would be no testing that would be required. So on those two issues, that's where we're at.
It may just be temporary, but being a oilfield-based company, they'll have to have a road permit going from the county roads and I can guarantee you it won't be refused. I can guarantee that.
I see absolutely nothing positive out of this for the town, for our citizens, for our neighbors in the outlying area outside of city limits. And I would like to make a motion that we have Jared seek counsel to represent us to protest and have a special meeting if necessary to hear his report and possibly hire whomever Jared recommends for the protest.
I second.
Bert?
Yes.
Harold, did you second that?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And I will work to get that accomplished as quick as possible and bring it back to you for the quickest possible meeting we can get once I've been able to get that figured out.
Okay, thank you, Jared.
Thank you, guys, and good luck. Hopefully this will.
Sure.
When you do that, you need to talk to some of these landowners because if they're gonna file a lawsuit also, you want to enjoy that lawsuit probably where you're not having multiple organizations. I don't know that we have to, Jared, I guess.
It's all in commission, it's not lawsuit-based, so it'll all be consolidated there at least for now. There's probably other steps to it later, but for now, we're at commission level.
We do have an attorney that is working on this, that's already filed a protest. Would like to be, I don't know, rules on this, you may know or our attorney may know, to just join in on ours, but it needs to be from the Town of Hennessy.
Will you leave us a business card to them or get it up here to Town Hall? That way I can reach out.
I will.
Mike Schulte meeting on Friday.
Well, yeah, we're gonna have a meeting with that attorney.
Okay.
At Team Fisher, at Schulte.
Oh, Schulte.
The Schulte office?
Yeah, Michael Booz is the attorney's name.
Michael's good. I've done a lot of work with Michael on the O and G side of stuff and he does good work.
And we're pushing this because the hearing is next Tuesday at the Corporation Commission on the 21st, 8:30 a.m. So that's why we gather that, that's why we're pushing this, not, you know, not to step on anybody's toes or push you.
Everybody certainly gets to do their thing with it.
You know, we're running out of time.
Sure.
To be able to get all that, get names, get the protests on that.
And I encourage everybody to reach out to Mike Derisky, Dorsey X, all those officials, elected officials, and let them know.
I talked to Chuck Hall and Chuck was very, Senator Chuck Hall, he was very receptive to what I said. He was asking for documents from the Corporation Commission so he could see exactly what this was about. And he said, in essence, that helps us because the Corporation Commission knows that he was filing a lawsuit. And he was sending an email to the Corporation Commission letting him know that he was filing a protest. So, but we need to do this together.
Sure.
Do you need a certain amount of names by Tuesday? Do you need a certain amount of?
A certain amount of strength in numbers. And I have the email address for this attorney. All it would take is just a quick email, say, hi, Salto, just, you know, about protest.
Is your, is your, Cameron, can you got that email? A lot of people aren't, you use this and I might be able to, you know, get it out there real quick.
Or be able to give it to Jack.
I'd say that last.
Sure, Jack could also be happy to share.
Again, it's, the gentleman's name, the attorney's name is Michael Booz, B-O-O-Z. His email address is michaelbooz@oeapllc.com. No periods in there, just michaelbooz@oeapllc.com.
Thank you.
Just, again, the way he told me or how it was explained to us, it's just a simple email to him. Wishes, protest, opposition, and just, again, the strength in numbers. So to do that, we would all appreciate that.
Thank you.
I don't know if anyone mentioned that this would ever happen, this would ever go through. I think the smell of the North Land, hydrocarbons, we're not gonna let that, I can all learn everything myself, but you're gonna get it down.
For sure.
There's a reason why that three-mile limit was set for towns this size, larger cities, it's a five-mile limit. So, and smell, pollution, so on and so forth. If you've read the application, you'll understand.
Yeah.
Yes, yeah, right. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Thank you, guys, for coming. Appreciate it. Yeah, if you guys would like to leave, if you want to stay for the whole meeting, you're welcome to, but.
I don't know what he's gonna do. I think he's, okay. You're gonna continue with the HUA?
Yes, yes. We'll go ahead and turn to the HUA.
Yeah. 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 Thank you.
Thank you, guys, for coming. Thank you. payment to utility technology services for 567 MXUs as part of the REIT grant, KI25-1 AMI system completion.
So they have delivered all of the MXUs. We've currently gotten, I think 189 of them, more than that? About 300 of them installed of the 500. So 567, so we're over halfway installed. So we just need you to approve. They also delivered this, just like Friday, delivered the base station, so it'll be getting installed next week.
Perfect. I make a motion to approve payment to utility technology services for 567 MXUs as part as a part of REIT grant, KI25-1 AMI system completion.
Second. Randy?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
David? Yes.
4.2, discussion and review draft copy of utility billing and collections policy.
So when I attached the policy, I didn't do the updated one that I fixed because I changed the due dates like you guys had requested. I changed it to the 17th and then extended out the disconnect date a couple of days also. So I also put in there that we've started a new process of notifying people the day before disconnect and letting them know that the next day they would be disconnected if they didn't call us or pay it. And I know over the past couple of months, we've been doing that and we've had a lot of people thanking us because they just forget or it gives them a little extra.
Sure.
And nobody else commented anything. I just implemented, nobody else sent me anything, so I just added those dates change that Harold had asked about.
Do you want to have any questions, comments? David?
Nothing.
Okay. I make a motion.
We don't have a site for action.
Oh, we don't? Oh, okay, just discuss and review? All right.
Well, I was told that they wanted to review it at this time, so that's why we didn't.
So now that you've had your review, we can bring it back for approval next week.
Yes.
We'll move on. 4.3, discussion with possible action to approve pay application number one for F5 construction for the Baltwater Station for the REIT grant 20154 project.
This is the initial pay application. They have went through and done all of their submittals to our engineer. Our engineers approved them. They should begin work.
I think early next week.
Early next week, yeah.
I make a motion to approve pay application number one for F5 construction for the Baltwater Station and REIT grant 20154 project.
Second.
Randy?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
David?
Yes. Harold?
Yes.
Thank you. Randy?
Here.
Bert?
Here.
Harold?
Here.
David?
Here.
John?
Here.
Um, we'll go ahead and go to report from Town of Hennessy at Hawk Agencies.
We meet this week.
This week? Okay. Okay. Number three, consider approval of consent agenda. Approval of minutes of the previous month's meeting. Approval of claims as follows. General fund, $63,991.74. RSTF fund, $149,912.89. Library fund of $474.04. Municipal court refund of $5. Previous month's claims, $5,261.97. Can we go ahead and roll all the other things that we just approved in the consent agenda as well? Okay.
They're already, I think they're, because your consent agenda is portioned claims.
Oh, okay, I see it now. Town treasurer's report, that's what threw me off, I'm sorry. Approval, it's my first day. Approve employee dental vision, life insurance renewal effective January 1st, 2026. Approve computer information concepts, annual people wear agreement for financial accounting software for fiscal year 2026. I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Randy?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Thank you. Randy?
Here.
Bert?
Here.
Harold?
Here.
David?
Here.
John?
Here.
We'll go ahead and go to report from Town of Hennessy at Hawk Agencies.
We meet this week.
This week? Okay. Okay. Number three, consider approval of consent agenda. Approval of minutes of the previous month's meeting. Approval of claims as follows. General fund, $63,991.74. RSTF fund, $149,912.89. Library fund of $474.04. Municipal court refund of $5. Previous month's claims, $5,261.97. Can we go ahead and roll all the other things that we just approved in the consent agenda as well? Okay.
They're already, I think they're, because your consent agenda is portioned claims.
Oh, okay, I see it now. Town treasurer's report, that's what threw me off, I'm sorry. Approval, it's my first day. Approve employee dental vision, life insurance renewal effective January 1st, 2026. Approve computer information concepts, annual people wear agreement for financial accounting software for fiscal year 2026. I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Randy?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
I'm in on the O-MAG liability and.
That's where we got it.
Okay. So, number four, citizens' comments? Mike?
As I was saying, we're gonna grind up and double chip and seal from 81 Highway, Conaco Roads going south back to Exxon. We'll be right there at the corner of Mitchell and Conaco.
Okay.
Since that's a nice County Commissioner, he can go north all the way to 7th Street, but I don't want you to, I mean, and this is Ron Townsend with Ranger Ron and his foreman. He can tell you, he's the one that's doing the grinding up. We've already done Boundary Street in Dover. I don't know if that will.
We're going 1,760 feet.
I mean, if she overlays that, we could still overlay on top of this if we round it up.
Ours is coming up and laying down right now. I'm pretty sure.
When is it again?
It's it is actually taking it up and then relaying like a new base and everything. But we have it in, we have, we have that in three phases. So we've been approved for phase one, which is 1,760 feet, which we have to complete. It's gone out to bids now. And so then, and then we also applied for phase two last month, which we won't get that funding until next year. So.
I'm just looking, and I'm sorry to interrupt. I didn't know if you, like if the beds go out, we get into cold weather. Well, like right now, the work we're doing is going to be really kind of, it's go if it gets below 50 degrees, there's not going to be any chipping and sealing probably until next spring, summer. So I didn't know if we could help out by going ahead and going to 7th Street because I don't want that to create them a problem, even if they overlay that. They're going to have a.
Well, if they're going to take it all up, if that's what you're looking at doing.
We got a federal grant, so we got to run it all the way and actually pour concrete, all that.
You go concrete?
Yeah.
I don't think it's concrete. I think it's asphalt. Yeah, they're removing the asphalt and then they're going to.
A lot different from brush.
But like 1.6 million for the 1,700 feet?
Yes.
Well, I didn't know if we should go on up there just to help you guys and, I mean.
I mean, if you want to, that's fine. If you want to stop at 1,700 feet because that's where we're going to come in. That way you're not wasting that money.
Absolutely.
You know? But yeah, we're going to go 1,700.
And if something goes wacky with the weather in Oklahoma, you know, at least we'd have that much done.
Yes.
And my next question is over here on Cemetery Road past 7th Street. I thought about just going all the way north to 51, then go past Cemetery because that street, well, and I feel like we should do it because my truck will go in and out right there off Cemetery Road out of that shelter. But we might just go ahead and go right to that because it's, it would sure be a big benefit.
Oh, yes, and we would very much appreciate the county for doing that.
Yes. Yes, we would.
So we'll take that space, that 1,700, you know, and go up to it. Then we'll just probably plan on going from Exxon and Cemetery Road just all the way to 51. Then we're going to get the next mile, you know, north going past the Cemetery.
Okay.
Yes.
We're not going to be, we're not going to grind that mile.
No.
Where's the chipping seal?
Yes.
Yes, and that's a double chip seal be really benefit. It's about $80,000.
About $80,000 in raw.
So, I mean, we've always worked together and like I said, our trucks use that a lot, you know?
Yeah.
So I think that'd be good for both those.
I do too.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
I appreciate it.
And I sent you, I just now sent you a picture, Mike, of our phases, like what we plan to do in the different phases that we, because we can keep applying every year for this municipal road drilling activity fund or whatever.
On the Exxon Road and Conoco Road, I want to let the neighbors know what's going on.
We don't get shot. But it is county.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we made them aware and we will continue.
When will it start?
It will start probably next, probably next week if the weather holds for it.
If it starts to get below 50 degrees again.
And you can guarantee a lot of people will complain. Once it's really nice, they probably will brag, but.
At first, there will be some, yeah.
But that, you know, we'll put a pipe right there where the water all stands in front of Singer Wall and Gas to get that water off. It'll be nice. The roads right there we described have been needed to be done for a long time.
Yes.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Move on to number five, town administrator report.
Over the past week, we've been working with our annual audit. They've been requesting while I was out on vacation, they were requesting. The girls were very helpful with them. We're going to finish that up this week. Randy, as the mayor, we gave them your phone number, so be expecting a phone call. We'll be working on installing the rest of the MXUs. Hopefully get them done in the next, they've been getting about 100 a week. So we should be done within, you know, just a couple of weeks. The painting is completed at the pool, so it looks really good. So we'll be ready to go with it next season. We fixed several leaks as they've been coming in. They've been jumping on them and getting them done. I appreciate the staff. They even have, I mean, they're noticing them themselves now coming to Alyssa. Some of our, even our parks guys are, you know, starting to pick up on those, so it's awful nice. I mentioned the new procedure with cutoffs that we are notifying people the day before with a little sticker on their door, letting them know, hey, give us a call or, you know, make the payment and all of that. And then Alyssa passed her P waste water and then she'll go
First of the year.
The first of the year and get her A and then she'll have all four As.
Is that right? Two more As.
Oh, two more As. She's got two more tests, but then she'll have all four As. So she's getting there.
Very impressive.
We sent off three meters to get tested because of different, you know, we wanted to make sure that we're compliant, you know, compliant. All of them came back within the parameters, so all of them tested good. We are, I am going to put out some dates for maybe several days throughout the next month for you guys to maybe come in and set with me so I can teach you how to submit agenda items. With our new program, you're able to actually go in there, type your agenda item and submit them. I know like the ones I do, I submit to Randy and then he approves them. But I want to teach you guys that and any other questions that we have in diligent. We've got some training videos that Shelley's gotten just to get you guys more, more up to par on those. So because we really want to go, I mean, we were given this, you know, we wanted to go digital, so we're trying to push that to get away from all of the paper, so.
We're good.
I got a question, Randy.
Sure, go ahead.
Have we heard anything from our state forensic auditors?
Not a word.
Not a word?
Nope.
Okay, thank you.
I even.
Yeah, I'm trying to follow up with the DA's office since they were the ones that requested it. I haven't gotten anything done on that or information back, I guess, on that at this point. So, but I'm trying to follow up to see if we can get something.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Randy.
Move on to other scheduled business. 6.1, discussion on KJ Filmworks presentation and update about Discover Hennessy.
This is what Dave requested. Does everybody have this in their paperwork?
I do.
I don't know. Dave, this was in your packet and emailed to you with the agenda items. So I don't know if you had the opportunity to review it or not, but this is what you asked for. And this is the first month we've actually documented everything we're doing. And it was kind of startling. This is an average month. On, I don't think a day or two goes by where we're not engaged with the Discover Hennessy doing something. There's always something, like today, we learned the north sign doesn't light up. So I spent time on the phone with Caleb and OG and E and talked to Tiffany about it. And, you know, so there's always something going on. We just got done on concrete with the pavilion. Now I'm working on a way to keep people off the pavilion and, you know, don't mess up the concrete doing donuts. But I'm not going to read all of these, but you can see kind of what we've been doing, what events we've been working on. And then on the right side is the ads that we run for free. And what I mean for that is, is that these are ads that if, let's say Harold came to us and said, I want to run an ad for the hood and hydraulic show and Discover Hennessy wasn't there, Harold would get a bill for, you know, this amount. And so this is, you know, I guess the total ads that we gave away this month were $2,025, okay? And these were ads that could have been billable, but they weren't because of part of the Discover Hennessy program. And then on the, we spent about 60 hours on Discover Hennessy during the month of September and a little bit of October. Any questions on that?
So in other words, like Lions Club Circuits advertise things on here and that looks to be about $750 if I added correctly my head. So that stuff Lions Club would have had to pay to get those ads.
Yes, in a perfect world.
If it weren't for Discover Hennessy.
Right. Then yes, that would have been billable time and space, you know, for us working to create this stuff.
Okay.
David, questions?
I'd like to look at it some more.
Okay, it was emailed to you. You didn't receive it.
I, I don't know. Was it emailed to my home email or my town?
Well, I emailed it myself to you and then it was also in your packet that was emailed to you.
I'll have access to my packet tomorrow, so it shouldn't be a problem.
Okay, all right. I just wanted to be sure you got that. I have one more very quick thing. This is nothing to do with what was asked for, but I'm going to share this with you guys. This is, I had Cam, my assistant, create this for me and he went back to January and documented every free ad that we place in our network since January. Not, not all of them are Discover Hennessy. Some of them are just friends at a library fundraiser. These are all of the free ads that we ran. So when he got to $11,155, I told him, please stop because it was like, holy crap, we're giving away a lot of ads. So I just want everyone to know that we are working here and we are giving our fair share to the community. You know, this isn't all just taking money and no give back. So I want everyone to be able to see that.
Randy, just a hint?
Yes.
I want to say you and your group do a phenomenal job and I appreciate you.
Well, thank you.
And we're lucky to have you here in the town and all the work that you do. So thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Dead of it.
Okay. 6.2, discussion with possible action to renew property and liability insurance with Oklahoma Municipal Assurance Group.
Did we not cover that in the consent agenda?
No.
No, because I put it under scheduled business on this one and the consent agenda on the HUA.
Ah, okay.
So.
We kind of already approved it, so.
For one instance.
Well, yeah.
Questions, concerns?
I make a motion to approve the insurance renewal for, with O-MAG. Lost my spot here. Do we need to do the liability renewal and the property renewal separately, Jared?
I think you can, because it's all with O-MAG. I think we can roll it into one and be okay.
Okay.
It's all dealing with essentially the same subject.
I make a motion to renew our liability and property insurance with O-MAG for the coming year.
Second.
Bert?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
6.3, discussion with possible action concerning the Hennessy Senior Center and town employees managing operations, purchasing, banking, inventory, performing cooking tasks and reporting financial data for grant eligibility.
Okay, that's my, that's my agenda item, sir. If you don't mind, I'll start and then you can give anybody you want to permission to speak.
Sure.
So last week, there was a little bit of confusion, some people asking questions about the senior center. And Tiffany was on leave. I don't know if it was vacation or not. It doesn't matter. Tiffany was unavailable. So what I did to make the meeting deadline for tonight on the agenda, I put it on the agenda. Am I saying anybody's done anything wrong? No, I'm not. Am I saying anybody's done anything right? No, I'm not. I wanted to ask Tiffany a couple of questions and have her answer them and then we can open it up for discussion. Are you okay with that, Randy? Okay. Tiffany, my first question is, do we have town employees going down there to the senior center and working while they're on the same time clock up here?
No, sir.
Very good. Do we have town employees going to the senior center and volunteering their own personal time to work at the senior center?
Yes, I mean.
That's really none of my business, but I wanted to put it on the table if you're willing to answer it.
I mean, that's not my, I mean, what people do, employees do on their personal time is not any of my.
As long as it don't interfere with the town time clock.
Correct.
I got that, okay. Okay, Randy, if you want to open it up for discussion, I'm good.
Sure.
Okay, I mean, I can do a small discussion on that. I'm Teresa Dillon and my mother, Joyce Thomas, goes up to the center every day for lunch, so it's been very important for me to keep that going to so that she has that place and that lunch and that camaraderie with her community on every day. Last spring, the director, Levon O'Brien, came to me and just said that she asked me to help to go ahead and sign with her on some of the paperwork that comes from the state that gives us some money for food. And she wanted me to go on to the bank account because the person who was her second on our Hennessy banking account is, she passed away in June.
Barbara Platt.
Barbara Platt. So literally, I think sort of helping Levon as her kind of as her second, I happened to walk in to help her to do some publicity on the day that she fell and broke her hip and went out. So I sort of jumped in as a volunteer to see what I could do to help Levon out, see what we can do with that. So in all of that, since that timeframe, we've gone into quite a few discussions with the people who come and eat, with the people, with Levon herself. Levon does need to retire. She's willing to retire because she just physically can't do her full job and it's frustrating her to know in that she can't do all that she wants to do. She is extremely scared that if she does, when she does step down, that there won't be anyone to pick it up. So I've gone out to some places in the community, the Golden Eagles, and asked for people to come back to see if people will, you know, help kind of put a board together to help go. So today I had a group meet with Levon to see if we, what we could do, what we could do. And I'll just introduce some of those, of those I had today. Teresa Hounds, Shirley Coons and Barb Walters were there today. My sister is Pam Joseph. She was there today. We all just said, what can we do? How can we ask the community to help us do some of this? What you may have heard, Dave, some of the rumble in some of that is that we, literally because of the true, of the income stream and the dwindling income stream, there is no way they can, as we try to replace a new director, that we can afford both a director and a cook. So that one person is going to have to do both jobs. So that's our first step, you know, maybe as we got more people to come or we had more income, there may be a way you could have two positions. But right now, our average is just serving, for the July, August, September, we were only serving 10 people a day and that was deliveries, home deliveries, takeouts and. and that was deliveries, home deliveries, takeouts, and impursons. So at 10 people a day in there, we really decided that we could combine the director and the cook as one position and put out applications for that. So that's really what you're hearing right now is that we are putting out, or trying to get someone who will take Levon's place, but also be the cook so that we can afford to have, to pay for, you know, just the one person to do that, to do the full job. Levon has been a little bit tentative about the idea that one, we could just have one person because they've had, we've had two. But because of the way the income is, and really there is, there's just, at this point, not a way to hire, to have two people, pay the salaries for two people. And we, there are some of the volunteers, Shirley and I both happen to be registered dietitians of Rand Management Company. So we decided, I mean, we volunteered to take on some of the jobs like making the menus, making out the grocery list, doing the grocery. So people are going to make it, trying to do enough, the extra jobs, volunteers on there so that we can have just one person. So we've asked, we've set up the application process for someone to come and pick up an application, and we're going to try to hire for just the one person. David, does that enter kind of what you're thinking of some of your questions or concerns?
It, it does, ma'am. And let me restate that. I want to make sure everybody knows that I'm not trying, I'm not personally trying to run the business at the Senior Center. It's just I had some citizen, citizens complaints, and, and I felt that we needed to get this on the agenda for tonight. And I really, really appreciate you and the other ladies being here and, and you talking to us about it, even though we have no jurisdiction, none of these guys do either, but.
Is there a Senior Citizen Board? Or is what, the Golden Eagles versus Senior Citizens?
So the Golden Eagles and the Senior Center are separate. They, the board that had been there over time has just literally aged out, meaning we've got one or two that have passed away, a couple have been in the, you know, into the nursing homes. So we, we don't have a, an active board at this point in time until like, you know, Levon and I got together with some people today to try about how do we put a board together to oversee what needs to be, to, to run the center.
So you do, there is some board members that are still alive, or yet are active into the.
Alive. You're not active.
Why, why am I not active since you've been there so long? Can you explain that? Let me go in since I'm the longest citizen that's been at Senior Citizens. And Teresa, we do appreciate your help. I, I said the moment you were put in there, you could help build the Senior Citizens. But when I contacted Levon, asked her, "Are you being pushed out? Or are you being, are you wanting to retire?" Because I don't, and I told you this. I don't have a problem with Levon stepping out. She's 90 years old. She's been the one running it since I've been there. In fact, she was running it when Mary was on there drawing income. But Levon was running it. That's how long I've been there, from scooter, before scooter on. Okay. I'm the president on the board. Now, you got all these board members. If they're being replaced, don't you think there'd be no fight? We were inactive because of COVID. I, I came in because Barbara Platt asked me to have a meeting. We hadn't had a meeting in two months. I said, "Levon, we do need to have a meeting. Let's do this meeting come Tuesday." We set the time of day, had the meeting. Then Barbara did.
What year was that? What year was that?
It was last year. Derek, well, it was within that year. Right? Let me finish you on this thing. Barbara Platt then got ill. She got cancer. Of course, that put a damper to the meetings because she does the secretary position. When I asked Levon about what, she said, "I'm being pushed out. I have no help." And I said, "I understand Teresa was there to help you. I'm sorry, if you need any help, Levon, you know I'm here to help you. I can catch you up. I can do whatever you need me to do. I used to deal with Noda, worked with Noda, worked with the seniors. I said, "I will help you. If you want to continue, I will help you till you're able to get back to doing it all on your own." I haven't heard nothing other than she did come in and give the paperwork, sent off to Noda. I felt she was doing her job. Now, I don't know what she's telling them, what she's telling me and the cook, what she's telling the town. I can't say that. I've heard conflicting stories. I'm not here to point fingers, but I am here to suggest the cook was being bullied by threatened by Brian, by Shelley, that she was doing the menus, and that if she didn't like the menus she made, she would get Brian there to cook it. That's a threat to me. A cook being threatened, that would have been my last day to walk out. I talked to her, asked her to stay. Shelley has nothing to do with Senior Citizens. Her mom used to cook there, I was there then. I haven't seen Shelley there. But Brian has been there cooking because October 3rd, when you, Shelley, and Levon, no board members, had a meeting, and then after the meeting, you, a week later, you're asking the Hennessy Eagles, which I, I'm not seeing any of these people that, "Oh, I have seen you at the Hennessy." I'm saying, I haven't seen anybody else. But they're all in the Hennessy Eagles. They're asked to be on the board, right? Y'all were asked at your meeting that you meet at the center. You don't eat there, but you were asked to be on the board. Who's responsible for that?
This, this isn't, this isn't, I'm, I'm sorry, not interrupting. This is not a town issue. The town has absolutely nothing to do other than the town of Hennessy owns the building. And if some of the town employees volunteered on their own time to go help, kudos to them. I am proud of any employee who wants to get involved in this community and do something good.
When Teresa came to.
There's no point in going on with this here. It sounds like the board, to me, is reorganizing, but that's not my business, that's not the town's business. But that is something to take up within the Senior Center.
But you're, you're not hearing the whole side. Teresa comes and tells me and the cook that she was to cook a couple meals ahead. I asked her right off, I said, "I understand y'all want Brian to be here to cook." What I understood, that's work hours. How can that be a conflict on his job? If he gets a call, and I told Teresa this, if he gets a call that the septic is shut down in the town of Hennessy, is he supposed to stay and cook? Or is he supposed to go to the septic?
Well, that's something our town administrator would take care of if.
She was, I was co, Tiffany was his boss, and would tell him what to do. But meanwhile.
But not on his own time.
I do know that he cooked a lot of meals at night to prepare.
Not every night. He did, we could go Sunday.
I am Levon's granddaughter, and when my grandma fell and broke her hip, I work in Fairview. It takes me a good hour to get to eat. After, I'm probably there at 6:00, 6:30. Brian brought Shelley up to talk to my grandma to find out what they could do to help because my grandma was so worried, her blood pressure was going sky high. And I do know that Teresa came up in the daytime while I was at work, so I didn't see her. But I know when I got there, my grandma was glad. Somebody was going to take care of her little old people and make sure they got fed. Because that's all she could worry about is making sure the people got fed while she was in the center.
That's, she was.
Nobody is forcing her out. If anybody is.
Well, she told me that.
If anybody is forcing her out, it's me. I am, she's 90. She's not, she has a broken hip, it's been replaced, and she's, she, her health is not great. She needs to retire. Somebody has got to learn how to do the paperwork, and she needs to retire. And yes, they have, I mean, kudos. She told me today that she's going to do the paperwork, the like stuff for long-term for the grants, and my grandma's relieved. So nobody from town is doing anything on town time.
Marge?
Well, I disagree on that.
Marge, 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 let me talk for a minute, okay? Randy, your permission?
Yes, absolutely.
Well, like I said when I started on this agenda item, I'm kind of capping off what Bert said. I, I agree with Bert. This is really not, you know, now that we've clarified with Tiffany that no, no town employees are on the town time clock while they're down there.
It's not true.
It's not an issue. And, and here's what I would do if I was you. I know you're a very active member of the Senior Citizen Center.
No longer.
No longer?
She's not been that active for, for months.
Where's you been?
Well, Marge, here's the bottom line. I, I would recommend that you, you try to get elected on the board, or, or try to do something down there to help them out, and, and try to be, try to be okay with it.
No, I was on the board. We were doing fine, from what I understood.
Okay.
But during this time Barbara died, she, Levon herself tells me she did elect Joyce, I mean, I'm sorry.
Teresa.
Teresa, Joyce's daughter, in there. I was happy. I believe Teresa could be a very good help to this community.
Okay.
So.
And David, I want to refrain from me saying that no employee, the day that Levon broke her hip that morning, Shelley, Boni, and I ran down there.
Alyssa.
And Alyssa.
Very good.
We helped out, and we made sure that those seniors got fed that day. We did spend city time that day making sure that people got fed. I don't want it.
Good for you.
I just thought about that, but I do want to tell you that.
Yeah.
And I would, I would like to add also, please. I would like to add also, yes, we have cooked meals at my house and taken them there. Yes, we have cooked meat on the smoker and taken them up to the thing. Yes, it's at my house, and maybe Brian took a lunch break. I know he does. He'll take a five-minute break, and he'll pick up the meat, and he might drop it off. But we get 30 minutes, we get lunch breaks, we get breaks at work. And what we do when we volunteer, I have never, ever heard of volunteering being such a damn bad thing. Sorry.
Well, I know Brian was there.
Brian's threatening to run for the election.
On the 3rd.
Okay. So you tell me, you come see me tomorrow and give me date and time, and I can look on that.
I have them on my purse.
Okay. Please bring it to me tomorrow, and we can.
And Tuesday brings the biscuits to Jenna because she came to work and says, "Oh, I brought the biscuits, I thought I was going to have to cook today." That to her made her think she was, Brian was supposed to cook.
That was a threat?
That was at the center. It was at the center.
And the only reason Brian said that is. You know that he has vacation time, did you know? He. I'll just say Brian.
I'm not here to argue with you. I'm telling the facts.
Brian, on Monday of last week, Jenna did not come to work. That's Monday. Monday, she did not come to work because she said she was ill. So the day of Monday, when I and my husband filled in and went in and cooked and did that, we talked to Brian at all, trying to make a contingency plan for Tuesday in case her illness had been extended. So Brian came in, coming up there on Tuesday would have been because he wasn't sure whether her, whether she was going to be there or not because she was ill on Monday.
Okay. So this, this matter, I understand you guys are passionate about it, but.
Thank you for letting us talk.
Absolutely. But this, outside of the employees working on town time, this isn't a town matter. And so I appreciate you guys' input, but I believe we're going to go ahead and move on.
I agree.
Um, so.
So we're, I'm going, we're going to go ahead and.
Yes, if you'd like to.
Thank you, appreciate the.
Oh, no, you guys can't leave it. Nope. No, you can't.
Thank you all for coming.
Thank you for coming.
I had to say that.
Okay. 6.4. Discussion with possible action concerning the town's street sweeper, its functional state, its repairability, maintenance requirements, its usefulness for the future and potential replacement.
This one's mine also. Tiffany, I'm hoping you read that agenda item. You and Alyssa, have we got any plans for the old street sweeper?
Well, I don't think we've checked all around to try to get it repaired.
Checked about three different places. Nobody really wants to mess with that. And really, I think it's going to be just too much money for what it's worth.
Yeah.
And the hydraulics were shot in the belly. The bed of it's, you know, the hopper's rusting out.
Okay.
So it doesn't keep the vacuum sealed. The brakes are going out.
Yes.
There's no lights.
Yeah.
25 years old.
How long has it been since that's been used?
About a year, coming up on a year, yeah.
And we also.
We bought it used, am I correct?
Yes, we bought it used.
We bought it used.
Yeah, it's a 20, a 2,000 model.
And I know the hopper, local welders have replaced the metal in that hopper multiple times.
It's rusted out.
Yeah.
Overall. Well, I know, and you guys invited, I don't know, you guys invited me up here to see a street sweeper demo.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, how'd that go?
Randy came.
Yeah.
Randy?
Yeah.
Yeah, I wasn't able to make it. I, I admit that. I'm guilty.
Yeah. No, it was, it was really nice. Yeah.
Yeah, it's about $200,000 worth.
Is that all?
Yeah.
Can I write a check for that, Katie?
Yeah. We also.
Can I write a check for that?
Yeah. Right.
We also contacted people about coming in periodically to sweep the streets for us.
Yeah, yeah.
A little over $5,000 a month, just for Main Street and 50.
Well, let me say this. I didn't put this on the agenda just because I, it's my pet project. It, you know, citizens were talking to me about it. And so I, I kind of knew already what, what we were going to run into. I didn't realize it would be that high, but.
We have another one that's coming in November to the board meeting.
Yeah.
So.
We're going to bring it down.
They're going to bring it down for the board meeting.
Okay.
And that one is a little bit smaller and a little bit more, maybe about $130,000.
All right.
So we're going to bring that one down in November.
So.
They were supposed to be here this time, and they had to reschedule.
So, so why don't, why don't we, Randy, with your permission, why don't we table for next month?
Sure.
September, October, November. I recommend we table this one.
That's fine.
Can I ask, should we table it or create a new, because it's going to be a presentation by?
I, I personally, I mean, I would just let it die since we know that they're already coming back.
Okay.
And that, that still lets it come back.
I'm good.
Yeah, we'll still have the discussion, just.
Very good.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Maybe they'll let us drive, actually.
Thank you, ladies.
They only let me ride, they wouldn't let me drive it. Wasn't really fast enough for me, anyway. Discussion with possible action concerning Boy Scout Park on Second Street and establishing a new pickleball court in this park.
Well, this one's mine also. Again, citizens have approached me, and this is kind of a playback off of Cliff. If you guys remember Cliff Vogt was talking pickleball court before he left. Some of the citizens mentioned to me, and it's been a couple of meetings ago, so I let some time go by so I could even take a look at it myself, because I live on Second Street there real close. And so, I, I, what, what is on the agenda here for discussion is the possibility of having Alyssa or some of her people do some research on how much it would cost to convert the old basketball court in the Boy Scout Park to a pickleball, a pickleball, I guess you'd call it a pickleball court. Depending on how much we got into repairing or upgrading the park around it, that's where I think a lot of the money would, would, would be needed. I think we might be able to do the pickleball court itself.
I think you would have to put in new concrete.
You think so?
Yes.
Okay. Well, is there any way we could at least? Well, is there any way we could at least do a little bit of a study on it and come up with some dollar figures?
Also, with that, I know you've heard pickleball, I've heard basketball court, because a lot of the kids, that would give the kids. So what if we did like a survey with Discover Hennessy, a survey to see what people would like to see there?
I like it. I like it.
Sure.
Very good idea.
Would it be possible to make it a basketball court with a good surface and marker off? I don't know.
You have to have a net, I think. Don't you?
Yes.
They've got nets that are retractable.
Do you think?
Yeah, to strip it.
Oh, yeah.
For pickleball and basketball. I don't really know.
I don't know either. Oh, I played it.
I envisioned whacking a pickle with a stick. That's an old hen store, that's a perfect slab, because you do half and half.
Just a, just a small study.
You want to do full work, because they have a half a court, because.
Think it's a good idea.
Good, it'd be great. Yeah, I think so. Sure. 6.6, discussion with possible action concerning the dirt work at the splash pad and the aquatic center.
This one's mine also. And maybe I shouldn't even have put it on there. I've heard a rumor going around that you guys have already made a decision that you're not going to do any of the dirt work over there.
I don't really think we need to. I mean, I went over there even today, after all the rain.
Yeah.
They went over there and they did some work.
Okay, the town did?
Uh huh.
Okay, because Mike, Mike is a target of opportunity when he volunteers for stuff. He told us he'd help us, but if you guys have made an evaluation and an honest decision that it's not needed, then I'm good with it. And, you know, what do you guys think? Did you guys go over and look at it?
I, I've been by there, but I haven't, I haven't stopped, walked around too much.
All right.
We checked it out after it rained all day yesterday, and there's, there was no standing water.
All right, then I'm, we'll just let that one die.
Okay.
If we see that it becomes a problem, then we'll, you know.
Sure.
I'm good with it.
Number seven, any new business, any matter not known or which could have been reasonably foreseen prior to the time of posting the agenda in accordance with Section 311-9, Title 250S. Or eight, council person's report, Harold.
Hello, everybody.
Bert?
No.
No, nothing.
David?
Nothing, sir.
Okay. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Sorry. Who was first?
I made the motion.
Who was second?
It's a toss-up.
All right, David. John?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.